Well, good afternoon. I'm John Martin, pastor at Trinity and associate pastor at Grace here in Hartford City. And we're getting ready to start our Lenten Bible study titled Journey to the Resurrection. And it's a six-week study, so it will cover every Wednesday during the Lenten season. Today's Valentine's Day, and I know that we recognize that, but it's also Ash Wednesday. And so as part of our gathering today, we will have the imposition of the ashes. So if there's anyone here, and unfortunately, I can't do that for anyone who watches it later or watches it on Zoom, because you're there and I'm here, but if you would like to get ashes and you can't come to this afternoon, yes, this afternoon session, you could come to Trinity. Tonight at 6:30, where we'll be having an Ash Wednesday service that will last from 6:30 to 7:00. And as part of that service, we'll do the imposition of the ashes as well. And then also on April 28th, that's not right, March 28th is Monday, Thursday, and there will be a combined Monday, Thursday meal for Grace and Trinity at Grace at 6:00 P.M. So if you want to come and explore what the meaning of Monday, Thursday is, and it will be a semi-seder, seder meal. So if you want to partake of that, you would be welcome. And right now, as I said, if you're looking at your screen and see April 28th, that should have been March 28th. And so other than that, we don't really have anything else to talk about. So as soon as we do the imposition of the ashes and then maybe some other things that we have, business that we have to conduct, then we'll go on from there and we'll start our study. I would guess that the study sessions will last between an hour and an hour and a half. And it'll really depend on how much discussion, what will be expected of the student. Now, if you don't perform this, you won't get thrown out of class. So don't think that's how you can get out of having to do it. But what will be expected is that this is the first session, so you would have completed the reading and looked at the questions at the very least in the, in the book for the first session today. And then for the second, the second session and so on. So since we're going to do the imposition of the ashes, as part of that, there will be a prayer, so we'll use that as our opening prayer. So. Hello, I'm sorry you at home. I'm going to turn my back on you, but our service today for the imposition of the ashes comes out of the Book of worship. Dear brothers and sisters in Christ, the early Christians observed with great devotion the days of our Lord's passion and resurrection, and it became the custom of the church that before the Easter celebration, there would be a forty-day season of spiritual preparation. During this season, converts to the faith were prepared for Holy Baptism. It was also a time when persons who had committed serious sins and had separated themselves from the community of faith reconciled by penitence in the life of the church and restored to participation in the life of the church. In this way, the whole congregation was reminded of the mercy and forgiveness proclaimed in the Gospel of Jesus Christ. And the need we all have to renew our faith. I invite you therefore, in the name of the church, to observe a holy Lent by self-examination and repentance, by prayer, fasting, and self-denial, and by reading and meditating on God's Holy Word, to make a right and beginning of repentance. And as a mark of our mortal nature, let us now bow down before our Creator and Redeemer. Hi, this is Pastor Jeannie. She's the other pastor associated with Grace and Trinity. And would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, you have created us out of the dust of the earth. Grant that these ashes may be to us a sign of our mortality and penitence, so that we may remember that only by your gracious gift are we given everlasting life through Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen. And so now, if you desire ashes to be applied, Pastor Jeannie and I, if you want to participate, will apply the ashes and we'll say something like, remember that you are dust, and to dust you shall return. Because we are mortal, and our only opportunity for eternal life is through the sacrifice of Jesus Christ on the cross. So during Lent, we remember our mortality, and we remember that our hope for the future is in the resurrection of Jesus Christ and our subsequent resurrection. I'm sorry, Rita Bell isn't here because I promised her I would use a wide Sharpie. From the dust you came into the dust you will return. Do you like ashes?
Oh, I was listening.
From the dust you came into the dust you shall return.
We're doing, what's your ashes?
Oh, okay.
It's just tall, tall ashes and all of them. You got the most beautiful cross.
I saw that. Now I just want to get in the books.
Then we have another piece of business to conduct today, and this involves two other people that are in this room. And it is Valentine's Day. He says, Happy Valentine's Day, if you didn't know. And we already talked about it, it being Lent. It's Ash Wednesday, and it's also Mom's birthday. Yay. She's eighty-nine today.
Happy birthday.
And eight days ago, it was Dad's birthday, and he was ninety-two. So Pastor Jeannie suggested last week that maybe we could get a cake. And the cake was made upside down, but I'm going to try to figure out how to fix that. And so we have a cake that says, Happy Birthday, Val and Bob. And so as Mom and Dad's family, we would invite you to participate in a short celebration of their birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, you wonderful one. Happy birthday to you. All right, I'm going to run across the street and get the ice cream. So maybe Shelley and Jan. This is Shelley and Jan. Sometimes you see their names up on the screen when they're on with us remotely. They're my sisters.
Nice to see their face.
Well, some people think so. I'm going to run across the street and get
Happy birthday. Thank you.
Oh, you did all of it.
Well, it's very shy as well, concerned. In the first. That may be over again. Well, we'll pick you up. Bye.
That's a good question. I set spoons in the car. I'll go get this. We don't have these. Are there spoons over there in the cabinets?
Let's see if my bag. She's probably loving it.
Yeah.
Except not looking, I never can get some. Look at this stuff.
But we were talking over the summer holidays. December, July fourth, right on the day of the prophecies. Some, because Easter isn't on the same day.
Right, yeah. And the ice cream is courtesy of Rita Bell.
I think they're all the same.
Did you want some tunes? That's my screen.
He didn't want.
I don't anyway. Oh, okay.
Where, didn't you have a stove?
Right there on the table.
Yeah.
So did anybody have a chance to do your reading in your book?
Not in the book, but we read it out in Bible.
Well. White, please. Ice cream would be great.
John, do you know why it's always on Wednesday?
By Ash Wednesday is because if you count forty-six days from Easter, this is where you come up to. Because it's forty days minus the six Sundays, because you never, you never serve penitence on Sunday. You remember the sacrifice of Jesus and the blessing that he is. And so forty days comes from forty days. How often did that appear in the Old Testament? It rained for forty days.
And Jesus was in the wilderness forty days.
Jesus was in the wilderness for forty days, and you can find some other forties if you look around.
About Moses in forty days?
Blood.
Blood.
Blood, yeah.
Well, the blood has now.
Yeah, he might have been three years or so. And so that's where the, that's why it counts back from Wednesday, because you have to have forty days of preparation, because that's how long Jesus was in the wilderness preparing, being tempted.
And the other days are days off?
Sabbath days, yeah.
The Sabbath days are?
Well, they're not Sabbath. They're to, they're to celebrate Jesus.
Okay.
Celebrate Sunday, S-O-M.
Just a small piece of white, please. No ice cream. White, or I mean ice cream.
A little, not a lot.
No, you got to share with her.
All right. So this week, we were starting on page seven. So if you have your book, you can look at page seven, and it says, Dust and ashes. How odd is that? Ashes to ashes and dust to dust. Anybody ever heard that said? Anybody remember hearing that in a situation that wasn't in this room?
All of it.
My grandmother, when she looked under her bed.
That's dust bonding. Graveyard services, yeah. A lot of times, as someone's body is being committed to the ground, you hear the the officiant saying ashes to ashes and dust to dust. Reminding not the person in the box, of course, but reminding us that that's the fates that we all have. And so what are we doing here should be the natural outgrowth of the officiant saying that is, well, what are you doing with this time that we have before you go into that box? And for this Lenten period, it's a time of preparation. And so we're kind of starting out, if you, if you did the Bible reading, you see that we were reading from Matthew three. And that reading from Matthew three was about Jesus' baptism. And so we're going to get kind of a whirlwind view of Jesus' ministry as we go through this time of preparation. And so that's where we're starting with our reading. So if you go to the top of page eight, it says, for this session, read the story of Jesus' baptism in Matthew three, one, two, through seventeen. And so, hey, there it is. Oh, it's on, it's on Jeannie's phone. It's a, I see multiple people with Bibles, and that's good. And so you could look it up in the Bibles. This happens to be the NIV today, but I won't guarantee that that's the Bible I'll use every time, but that's what I picked for this time. And so would anyone like to read the first couple verses, and then we'll, we'll go on to somebody else so we can include, or you can eat our cake, have our cake, cake and eat it too. Although I guess that doesn't really work.
In those days, John the Baptist came preaching in the desert of Judea, Judea, and saying, repent, for the kingdom of heaven is here. Sorry.
This, this is he who was spoken of through the prophet Isaiah, a voice of one calling in the desert. Prepare the way for the Lord. Make straight paths for him.
John's clothes were made of camel's hair, and he had a leather belt around his waist. His food was locusts and wild honey. People went out to him from Jerusalem and all Judea and the whole region of the Jordan, confessing their sins. They were baptized by him in the Jordan River.
When he saw many of the Pharisees and Sadducees coming to where he was baptized, he said to them, you Jerusalem vipers, who warned you to flee from the coming wrath? Produce fruit and keep in with repentance.
And do not think you can say to yourselves, we have Abraham as our father. I tell you that out of these stones, God can raise up children for Abraham.
The axe is already at the root of the trees, and every tree that does not produce good fruit will be cut down and thrown into the fire. I baptize you with water for repentance, but after me will come one who is more powerful than I, whose sandals I am not fit to carry. He will baptize you with the Holy Spirit and with fire.
His windoring fork is in his hand, and he will carry his threshing fork, gathering his weed into the barn and burning up the chaff with unquenchable fire. The baptism of Jesus, and Jesus came from Galilee to the Jordan to be baptized by John.
But John tried to deter him, saying, I need to be baptized by you, and do you come to me? And Jesus replied, let it be so now. It is proper for us to do this to fulfill all righteousness. Then John consented.
As soon as Jesus was baptized, he went up out of the water. At that moment, heaven was open, and he saw the Spirit of God descending like a dove and lighting on him. And a voice from heaven said, this is my son whom I love, and with him I am well pleased.
And we might say at this point, the word of God for the people of God, thanks be to God. And what do we get out of reading scripture like that in a group like this? Is it the same as when we read it alone in our closet at home? Well, I apologize to everyone. I was trying to be so sneaky and hide the stocks, and my mom and dad wouldn't see if they came in, and I forgot to get out the forks and spoons and the Valentine's napkins.
She had the rage of the angels.
So is there any difference in reading scripture as a group than there is?
Other people put different emphasis in different places and makes you think about it.
Or what, why do some people seem to stress one part that we don't stress? And why does that go on? So that was, where were we? That was on now there's optional reading, and we'll go ahead and do the optional reading since we're kind of still consuming our cake, but this comes from Romans, chapter six, verses one through eleven.
The Old Testament, Romans, Exodus.
Well, I guess I missed that one. All right, anybody know how to say that little ditty so we know where the Book of Romans is? Number six.
You just have to do that one more kid.
Matthew, Mark, Luke, and Josh.
So this is chapter six in the Book of Romans, verses one through eleven. What shall we say then? Are we to continue in sin that grace may abound? By no means. How can we who died to sin still live in it? Do you not know that all of us who have been baptized into Christ Jesus were baptized into his death? We were buried therefore with him by baptism into death, so that as Christ was raised from the dead by the glory of the Father, we too might walk in newness of life. For if we have been united with him in a death like his, we shall certainly be united with him in a resurrection like his. We know that our old self was crucified with him so that the sinful body might be destroyed, and we might no longer be enslaved to sin. For he who has died is freed from sin. But if we have died with Christ, we believe that we shall also live with him. For we know that Christ being raised from the dead will never die again. Death no longer has dominion over him. The death he died, he died to sin once for all, but the life he lives, he lives for God. So you also must consider yourselves dead to sin and alive to God in Christ Jesus. That sounds kind of promising, doesn't it?
Well, it's perfect for Ash Wednesday, too, to remind us, not just to die physically, that that's going to happen to everybody, but we need to die to ourself and have our whole life turned over to God, you know, turned over to Jesus Christ, and that he will give us a new life now and forever. So that's a perfect scripture for today.
So how do we die to sin?
Not supposed to have control of us anymore. The Holy Spirit comes into us and fills us with his spirit.
And so the Spirit gives us the strength to be able to resist sin that we wouldn't have in and of ourselves. We couldn't do by ourselves.
Our helper.
Our helper.
We're doing something like this in a Zoom meeting. And they talked about dying out to sell and be born a new person. And you choose, it's like going up a step. What do you want to be? Who are you from here?
So you have to die to that old sin. You have to die to that old desire to continue to sin. And that's what Paul's talking about in these first verses. What shall we do then? Shall we go on to, to sin so that God will be glorified? And the whole point is that if Christ is in us, the desire to go on to sin should be dead. It should no longer be controlling us. Our desire to sin will slowly, maybe not all at once, but will slowly subside as we place our faith and trust more fully in Christ. So as Pastor Jeannie says, that's a great verse for for the start of Lent.
Also dying to our, our desires and making sure we're focusing on God's desires. Not what I want, what does God want? You know, giving everything over. It's not just on Sunday morning. You know, it's not just, you know, making sure we give everything to God, because then we will know too, the complete blessing in him. You know, pointing to the steps that we are to do, and we will know a great plan and a purpose and stuff too. So it's an amazing gift to completely, and that's what he asked us to do, turn everything over. Again, our sin is one thing, but also all our decisions, all our plans, Lord, it's yours. Show me, and he will. So. It's a great opportunity for us too.
And we could go back to the Old Testament and Jeremiah, I know the plans. And so there's no longer our plans. You know, they're, Paul talks about it lots of times. He talks about a well, in Ephesians two, ten, he talks about why we were created, to do the good things. Well, in Ephesians two 10, he talks about why we were created to do the good things that God has prepared for us. And then he also tells us that we're supposed to work out our own salvation with fear and trembling. And if you stop there, it sounds like, well, salvation is our own doing. But Paul adds. Because it's not you that's working, it's God that is working in you. So you have to surrender yourself to God and turn away from sin.
And that's what Lent two is all about is we start that and the focus, you know, is making sure, you know, if you. You don't give up chocolate or coffee or whatever. Just to say you've done something, but, but, but trying to give that or adding more prayer, more Bible reading, more worship. Adding to that so that your focus is more on God and not on ourselves, not on our plans, you know. Making sure we're, we're leaning towards the Lord uh, for everything. So by giving something up. And sometimes it's probably better to give up, you know, technology or watching TV or, or other things that. Interfere or take our time away, you know, more than just food. Uh, that take our time away from the Lord so that we can give more time to the Lord.
Absolutely, because we talk about fasting and next session two is about fasting. But we talk about fasting as always being giving up something. But as Genie's talking about, if instead we take, take up something that's good and is the will of God. We're automatically going to give up the things that were of lesser value in God's eyes. Because we don't have the time to do those other things. So taking up good is like a double blessing. Because when you do good, you don't have as much time to do the lesser. It doesn't even have to be something bad that you're giving up. It's just something that doesn't really. Serve God's purpose like perhaps what you're taking up. So if you go on to page 10, there's three questions and they're primarily about the verses that we've just read. What was John the Baptist's primary message? And how did the crowds respond? What was John the Baptist calling the people to do?
Repent.
Repent, repent of what?
Your sins.
Your sins, repent of your sins. And so his baptism was a baptism of repentance for sin. And so, and how did the crowds respond?
Well, they all gathered.
Yeah.
They gathered and so it makes it sound like that a lot of people responded. But without the Holy Spirit, how well, how well do you suppose they get over the long term? I mean, Jesus called the people to the higher level of baptism and yet. He was pretty much alone on that day on the cross. There weren't a whole lot of people gathered around him. So, you know, it, it's kind of a cool thing to do when you're all there in a group. Anybody ever been involved in something like that? You know, people have told me about a time in their life when they went to an altar call. And went up and they gave themselves to Christ and. The next day they got up and then went back, right back to where they were before. So it's more about just confessing your sin. It's about changing your focus and putting your focus on Jesus and. Making a commitment to continue to listen for and walk with him.
And again, we don't have all the information about John the Baptist, but since he gathered so many people. I'd want to think he was like charismatic. One, he was so passionate about Jesus's coming and we all need to change, you know, so he was passionate about that. But I just imagined him being, you know, just so energetic and passionate and very vocal and reaching out and out in the community, which we know that's true. That he was out there in the community with all kinds of people, not just in the temple, not just, you know, isolated. He was really out there with people. So, um, but it'd been interesting. What is he saying? What does he do? And, and then, you know, as John shared too, then they responded gratefully. And what was their next step? Did they continue? You know, and I'm sure some of them did and then come to know Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior. But um, for us to learn from that as well, you know, I'm so grateful when we get to hear a, a passionate, charismatic speaker and. And or a big group that you worship with. And I've gone to different, you know, events and conferences and stuff. That's great. But that shouldn't be the only thing. That shouldn't be the end. It should be the, another start to continue to grow. And so I think that's again what John shares and hi- his humbleness when he's with Jesus too is just amazing as well, like. I shouldn't be baptizing you. Jesus says, this is the plan again, because Jesus wants to show the humility and that, you know. For all of us, his, our steps need to be that too, that we'll be baptized, that we can go before the Lord. And that we humble ourselves and ask for forgiveness of sins. Jesus didn't have any sins, but again, he's showing us. The steps that we should do as well.
With a head and heart thing.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to make conscious decisions to make a change. Or do specific things. And then, uh. How the, the desire to. Welcome this new life. It's, it's a ongoing process of the two working together, I think.
And that's very apt to say it's a hard thing because the Old Testament prophets. Jeremiah and Ezekiel both preached on. It would be God that would take away that heart of stone and give us a heart of flesh and on that heart of flesh. And Ezekiel especially, he talks about the law would be written upon that new heart. Well, who's writing that law upon your heart? The Holy Spirit is. So, you know, Jesus and the Holy Spirit are the fulfillment of the Old Testament prophets. And so when Jesus said, I came to fulfill the law. That's exactly what he did. He fulfilled the law because he replaced. The hearts of stone in all of us who, well, those who put their faith and trust in him and with. The law, spirit. Question two, Jesus said he wanted to be baptized in order to fulfill righteousness. How did he accomplish that? And Pastor Genie really already answered that question. You know, he, he was an example for us. You know, if, oh, Jesus is Messiah is certainly good enough for us to be baptized. And. You know, so we really already covered that one. And then number three, how does John the Baptist discuss, describe Jesus to the crowds?
More powerful than himself.
More, yeah, more powerful than himself. And then someone else weighs in on who Jesus is. How does that person describe who Jesus is? One whose voice came from above? God, what'd God say about Jesus? This is, he is my son and whom I'm most proud, depending on the version that you grew up. But you know, that's, that's essentially what he says, the voice from heaven, God the Father. And, you know, you, you'd almost think that that would be, get people's attention, wouldn't you? If you were sitting in church and you heard a voice coming from heaven. If you were out in the, I think we might hear that voice maybe more often out in God's creation perhaps than we do in church, but. That's the voice that we're listening for. And so that had to be a great seal of approval, not only on Jesus, but also on John the Baptist ministry. Well, baptism, well, I think we're on, we're on slide 10 and there are 29 slides to cover. These scriptures that you find on page 11. And they're from our favorite sources, Exodus and then lots from Leviticus. And so John the Baptist's practice of baptism grew out of the Jewish tradition of ritual washing. And so that's really what these scriptures that are here describe ritual washing. We can learn more about the significance of baptism by exploring these ancient practices. And so he provides. We don't know a he or she for the author, but uh, it's a, a group, I suppose. Says, he, he gives bullet points for each of these scriptures. And I would invite you to go back and look at these scriptures, but it says first new priests were washed. When beginning their office. Can you think of anything similar that we do maybe when we start a new job?
Restaurant business, you go wash your hands.
So there still is. Something important about physical, physical cleanliness. And you know, and we start a new job or when we started new day's work, like restaurant work or. You know, sometimes if your work is especially dirty, maybe you clean yourself up before you go home. But you know, when we have a change, a lot of times we want to start out on a good foot. And so we, we want to start out with a clean slate. Anybody ever heard that term before? There's all these things that we use to describe getting right. So we could say that. This is a way of getting right as well, getting. Our ducks in a row. I don't know how many ducks you have, but if you had a bunch that you had to get in a row.
Well, COVID would remind us of the value of washing your hands.
And you're absolutely right. COVID reminded us the importance of cleanliness. And you know, maybe, maybe we wonder why God was such a stickler in the law about cleanliness, but. A lot of it had to do with trying to control disease. I mean, there's a practicality in a lot of this. You know, if you touch something that's dead, you might want to wash your hands. Well, so. And then it says, the next bullet point was preached. Do you want to go through each of these scriptures? We can if you like. Cause I got them all here. Except the ones I missed from Romans. But priests washed their hands before completing sacrifices. Who were they sacrificing these things to?
To the gods.
To God. So, you know, it probably seems reasonable to offer God a clean sacrifice and a lot of these. Or some of these verses at least talk about the importance of the sacrifice that's being offered. Being as perfect as it possibly can. Because they're trying to honor God. They're trying to bring God glory through their sacrifice. And so. I, I thought of a bad example for me. Because we talk about when we sing on Sunday morning, we're supposed to make a joyful noise. And our worship is supposed to be in God glory. And I know because he lets me sing that God has a sense of humor.
Um, we talk about anointing people, but here it says blood and oil and sprinkled it on Aaron. We don't put the blood on.
Well, that, that was what they did for the priests when they were sanctified for God is the blood of the sacrifice. And of course, they rubbed the blood of the sacrifice on the horns of the altar too. So. Anybody know what the significance of blood was in the sacrifice?
Sort of cleansing?
Well, that's what they were doing with it there, but why was blood cleansing?
Make us white as snow?
We could sing a song like that. But blood is life. And so when you offer the blood to God, you're offering him life. And so that, that's the importance of the sacrifice. So, you know, it, when we baptize, we don't. Baptize people in blood, we baptize them in water. But we're also baptizing them in the Holy Spirit since we're after John and we have Jesus. So we would say fire and water. So we don't need to, we don't need to. Uh, anoint people or sprinkle them with blood anymore because we're sprinkling them. With the Holy Spirit.
I saw it said something about between the horns. And we heard a Jewish person speak and they said something about putting blood on the head of the. Animal, didn't they? Remember that? That was kind of interesting.
Again, they did put blood on the priests and, you know, behind the ears and they, that, that was something again, reminding of the sacrifice and life. And those two things as well. Um, the other thing I was thinking is again, preparing ourselves for worship and giving us the best. The intent when people would dress with their best clothes for worship was to give your best for the Lord. But then I think it became, you dress up to get attention. You dress up, you know. To focus on yourself that you're looking so good instead of giving your best for the Lord. So they're like. We don't have to do that. You're giving your best for the Lord, not in your clothes. That was, you know, not supposed to be the intent of wearing nice things for worship. The intent is to give our best of ourselves. So, um, so. I don't care if anybody wears jeans to there or shorts or anything else to worship. Give your best, bring yourself, bring your passion, give that. Um, so again, that's something else that, that we should do when in the Old Testament, when they wanted to give their best and all the, the offerings that they have. We should still give our best in, in a passionate way. So come be ourselves in that worship time.
Well, no matter what you wear, he sees your heart. So you're not hiding anything anyway.
Yeah, yeah, true.
You're not fooling anyone, the person who matters. That's why you came, you got to come today. Okay, so the next one bullet point, the third bullet point down on page 11 is. The high priest washed himself before and after sacrifices on the day of atonement. And that's from Leviticus sixteen, one to twenty-eight and that's where it talks about on the day of atonement, they get two goats. And. One of the goats they sacrificed to God and the other goat, they let go off out into the wilderness. And the goat that they let go out into the wilderness is the scapegoat. And that's the goat that on the day of atonement, all this, the, all the people in Israel, their sins are forgiven. And they're placed upon that goat as it scampers out into the wilderness. So it's not always good to be a scapegoat because all the sins. Of others fall upon you. And so we still talk about scapegoats today. You know, somebody who's kind of set up to take the fall for other people. And so that's what this goat did, carried away the sins of the nation. And so those were two good looking goats. And so whenever the high priest or whenever the priests are doing something, and you've got to think. That for the priests that are in the temple doing these sacrifices day after day. How many are being offered and such? It's gotta just be a bloody mess. It's probably beyond our understanding and. Probably there was a place in the temple where you could see blood running down. And so. You know, it, can you imagine being in that? So being clean as much as you could would be a great personal value, I would think as well. And not only are you honoring yourself by cleanliness, but you're again putting your best forward for God.
So question, as I read the scripture and stuff too, um, cause I see where it says goats, you know, offer a male goat. And then offer a ram for a burnt offering. So. What's the difference? Isn't a ram a male goat? Or is, is again, i- is there uh, offering a male goat that, that cannot produce? Or I mean, again, usually it was offering the best animal. But that's why I wondered if anybody else had any ideas.
The goat is a younger, the ram would be adult, right?
Yeah, okay, that would make sense too.
But why didn't they just say?
Maybe in its pride. Maybe in its pride.
It's what says male goat or male goat for a sin offering and a ram for a burnt offering.
And so what's the difference?
That, that's, well, maybe age is what, what the guess is. So that the ram would be the older, yeah. So.
A ram is a male sheep. A male goat is a buck or a weather, if it's casted. One's a sheep and one's a goat.
Oh, okay.
What's that mean?
Two different animals.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Two different species, right? Goats and sheep.
Okay.
Oh, there are two different categories.
But still important for that, that, you know, culture, both animals were extremely important to have, have milk and then.
It's also a negative stereotype associated with them. So who better to carry the sin out?
So. I think a ram of always budding.
And.
Thanks for looking up.
And the scapegoat, as Ron says, has a negative connotation. Old Splitfoot is. A name that we call Satan sometimes and sometimes portrayed as having little goat horns on his head and. I mean, not. I know what Satan looks like, but. So the ritually unclean people and objects were washed. Who would be ritually unclean? Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of the people in this, in this room. Were ritually unclean at least once a month. You know, because women who were in menstruation were considered ritually unclean. And if you read the story in, uh, two Samuel eleven about, uh, David and. Yeah, Bathsheba, David and Bathsheba, it's thought that she was performing the cleansing rituals. At least some biblical scholars say that after her time of the month. When David looked out and saw her cleaning herself. And so there was a process that had to go. You had to go through. And so for women, they had to do this as long as they were in. The age when they menstruated, they had to go through this ritual cleansing once a month. In order to be clean. And a lot of times, and this was true for that, they were required to leave the community. And go out and go through the cleansing before they came back. And before they were considered cleansed. And so sometimes as Jesus made the lepers go, you had to be certified clean by a priest. So there were all these processes that they had, like if you touched a dead body. You had to go through a cleansing process. And I don't remember which gospel it is, maybe in Matthew. Where the high priest and the Sanhedrin wanted Jesus taken down. And done before Pass or before nightfall so that they could celebrate the Sabbath. So, or else they would be unclean. So you gotta get clean. And so June, what did you say? How we get clean now? What can wash away my sins? Nothing but the blood of Jesus. So by putting our faith and trust in Jesus, now we have a path to becoming clean. Set aside, sanctified. That the people in the Old Testament days did not have.
Peace and lamb of God, not the goat.
There you go. Well, that, that is an interesting point, isn't it? Cause he, we talk about Jesus taking the sins of the world.
But still the burn off, he died. Goat did.
The sheep.
Goat ran out, probably started.
Ate by wild animals. And then at the bottom, page eleven, it talks a little bit about the Qumran community. And how they were a separatist Jewish sect living near the Dead Sea around one hundred B.C. And we think that most of the Dead Sea scrolls that we read about. Were found in places where the Qumran people had, had hidden them. And they believe that they were the only surviving rende faithful to God's covenant. And practiced daily baptism or ceremonial cleansing as part of their covenant community.
Hmm, daily baptism? Well.
Baptism.
Dead sea, Dead sea, salt, that would be a cleansing.
I don't know. I think you'd come out of there. As the water dried out of the salt, I think you'd come out of there itching a little bit.
We went to the Dead Sea and we saw one guy run out there and think he's gonna float. Well, he splashed himself and got salt in his eyes.
Oh yeah, you don't want to. But you will float. You will float.
Do in Salt Lake, so in Utah, so you probably.
Oh, the Dead Sea, you float real quickly. Yes, it pushes you up, yeah.
It's dead because of the salt would kill anything in it.
Except for the flies. Flying around above it. At least that's the way the salt, Great Salt Lake is.
I don't remember the flies in Israel.
Does anyone have any questions of up through page twelve? It talks there about John's baptism in the second paragraph. Was available to all who repent of their sins and turn to God. Anybody ever heard anything like that, but, but Jesus said? Or that Paul said? Paul in Romans eleven, if you confess with your mouth that Jesus Christ is Lord. Or Jesus in John three, let's see, what verses it in John three? Sixteen.
Sixteen, you're talking about?
For God so loves the world. So. And then it, it talks there also about the symbolism and a lot of the things we do are symbolic. It's just how it is, you know, when Jesus was baptized, he wasn't sprinkled. And he wasn't splashed, he wasn't dry cleaned or any of those other things that we talk about. He was immersed. And so not him, but us, when we go into the water, we go into the water. And while we're in the water, while we're under the water, we symbolically die. We die to our sin. And then we rise up out of the water, we're reborn, we're reborn as new creatures in Christ. And as long as we strive to continue that walk with Jesus, we'll remain those new creatures in Christ. Where we are washed by the blood of Jesus because he was that sacrifice for each of us. Hello? And then on page thirteen, the, uh, third sentence, would somebody like to read that?
No action, spiritual practice or work that we perform earns God's blessing or forgiveness.
So how are we saved? If we can't earn it?
By belief.
By what? Some?
Faith.
By faith, we're saved by faith. Faith being those things that we can't see, we can't be certain of, but we have to trust. If you go to, uh, Hebrews eleven, you can read. There about faith. Jesus talked about that in, uh. Gospel of John also. In the last chapter where he was talking to, uh, doubting Thomas. And he said, you believe because you have seen. But blessed are those who believe without seeing. Who have faith, the faith that Christ did die for each of our sin. And then it goes on to say, we receive Jesus righteousness as a free gift. When we trust in him. And his completed word for us. What do we call that? That free gift of God? It's on the building in front of the church over here. God's grace, by God's grace, we are saved. God's grace poured out for each of us. Through Jesus on the cross. When we place our confidence in his life, death and resurrection. As the means that bridges the gap between us and the life God offers. It's. Pretty good sentence there. And then when you go on down into, uh, the next paragraph. The next to the last sentence says, God provides the power that changes us. God provided it all. We just have to accept. We have to accept the sacrifice of Christ and put our faith and trust in that sacrifice. And God provides the power that changes us reminds me of the verse that it's not us that are working. Out our salvation, but it's God in us. But we have to continue to walk along with God and seek his will and follow him where he leads us. Which means we have to give up control. Who in here is good at giving up control? Why are you making that face Kathy? Who doesn't want to be in charge?
You can come. We'll go go.
John, there's a little, uh, praise in the. In Matthew three. When Jesus was baptized. Uh, that moment the heavens was open. That's a big deal. And what you're talking about is a big deal. When all of creation was moved at Jesus baptized and bathed in. And then when. He removes his sin, replaces. With grace. That's a big deal for us as well.
And I would add another time at his death. All of creation was moved again. The sun stopped shining and the, the divider between the holy of holies and. The outer part of the temple was rent from the top to the bottom, torn in two. And the graves were open and the dead rose and, you know, all these things. You know, like, if you believe anything, I don't know how you can't believe everything. I, I think. To me, it's, once I started to believe, it's easier to believe than. Than not.
So even the soldiers believed after he died, things were happening. He said, he must be the son of God.
They saw something. Well, on, uh, page fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. There are, well. Sixteen and there are life application questions. And if you look at question number four. Are there any ways that you hold on to the sins that Jesus carried away from you? I see people shaking their heads. My sisters are. I'd shake my head too, but it'd rattle and, and. Wouldn't stop. It'd be like a bobble head. But how do we do that? Are there things that wake us up at night? Things that. If we truly believe that Christ died for our sins, that yet we're, we're reminded of them and we take them out and. In the wee hours of the night and we talk, oh, I wish I hadn't done that. And. We remember and we dwell on that instead of the good things that God has done for us.
Well, yeah, and the hesitation, the trust, you know, those things, because we're, you know, holding on to, I made this mistake. I've, I'm, I did this wrong, you know, instead of. I'm trusting in you completely, Lord, so.
Anything we worry about.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Jan said anything we worry about.
Or afraid of, yeah.
We're not to worry, but. Anybody in here guilty of worry?
I carry it by myself.
Well, and I try to share too, when, because those emotions are going to come from fear or worry or anxiety, something, you know, panic, you know. The emotion might come and then reminding people, and when that comes, because we're people, you know, we're humans. Give it to God, pray and, and give it to God, you know, um, because the emotions will come if somebody startles you, somebody does something. Um, and then make sure you pray and give it to the Lord and then, and you're relieved of that. So he's got a plan of how to. Accept that and move on, so.
Give it to God. We're better at saying it probably than we are at doing it.
I think sometimes you give it, but then a little bit later.
I wasn't quite done with that sin.
I feel better now. I can handle it.
I can be in charge again. Look at me. And that's really what we're saying. We're saying, well, I don't trust God that he can take care of that. So. Guess I'll have to carry it a little bit more, uh, longer on my own.
Well, that, that happens in all kinds of practical ways too, from people who have diabetes, like, oh, I'm doing good. Okay, I can eat whatever I want. Instead of, no, I've got diabetes. I gotta watch. Or people with, um, you know, mental things and they should be taking medicine, different mental health issues, um. Different practical things, not just, uh, medicine, but the, the vitamins and minerals that you need. That will help you in your mental health. Like, oh, I'm feeling good. I don't have to take it anymore. Like, no, your body needs this, so they help that. So the same thing for us, you know, we, we need the Lord. So going to the Lord, we need the word. So going to that every day, we need to be together, which praise God, there's so many here today. Uh, we need to be in worship. All those things are important. Um, so that we know God and follow God and we'll have a, a peace and a strength, so.
All right, let's go on to question number six on page sixteen. We have been freely forgiven by Jesus. Is there anyone in your life, living or dead, whom you need to forgive, whether they have asked for forgiveness or not? How about forgiven, not forgotten?
I've heard that.
Yeah, we've heard that. If we haven't forgotten. Have we really forgiven? I don't know.
That's not sinful to remember.
Well, you're carrying around extra baggage you don't need to.
In my brain, it's there. If I don't dwell on it, I have no appetite.
There you go. If you don't dwell on it. I, I think that's a good description. Right, it festers. And I think that if, if it's festering and if it's dwelling. We ought to reevaluate whether we truly did forgive. Whether we've really let it go. And it doesn't matter whether the person accepted our forgiveness. Or even asked for our forgiveness.
Or even thinks they deserve it. They did anything to. Have forgiveness for.
All that matters is that we forgive. And so. That is one of those things where we have to trust God and turn it over to God.
We forgive, for they know not what they do, and I forgive myself, for I don't know.
There you go, that's. We all make mistakes.
And if he did ask for them forgiveness, they said, oh, really? And they may not even remember it.
I was just gonna say, and I think if, if I'm replaying a conversation. In my head that, about things I wish I had said or whatever, then I can't say. I've let go of it, because if you have, then you don't keep thinking about what you could have said or what you should have said or. That means I'm still.
I know, and it's a pastor, I'd never walk out of worship on Sunday morning and say, why, I wish I had. A little bit of second thought, but. All right, and then if you go on to page seventeen, it talks about spiritual discipline of confession. And in the second paragraph, it says, we often think of confessing our sins only as part of the beginning of our relationship with Jesus. Where we acknowledge our failure and turn to faith in the finished work of Jesus. But they're making the point, the confession is an ongoing process. That probably most days, we all have something that we need to confess. Maybe it's just an ill. An ill thought. That we've had about someone, and yes, thoughts matter. Jesus told the people, you say, do not commit adultery. I say, don't even think about it. Because the thoughts in our minds lead to action. Do not commit murder. With the same idea, don't commit sin with the same idea. So. Confession involves your entire being, mind, heart and soul. And it may be an ongoing process. We may want it to be done immediately. But if we've been hurt especially. Badly, especially badly, let's just say if we've been hurt badly. It may be harder. To offer forgiveness, but the call's still the same. And you should always remember in Matthew seven, when Jesus teaches us the Lord's prayer. And the two verses after it, it talks about. If you forgive, your Father in heaven will surely forgive you, but if you do not, he will not. So forgiveness is one of those things that we have to strive to do.
Is that conditional? This, I'll do this.
Yeah. If you have faith in Jesus, God will save you, that's conditional. Right?
You wanna get it up to be to go away? Why aren't we going more?
You're silly. Okay, so then when it talks about Ash Wednesday in the second sentence, it says, this is a day to intentionally turn away from our failings. And lesser pursuits that sometimes cause us to miss the best. That God has planned for us, that's what we were talking about at the beginning. Where if we pick up something that God is calling us to do, it may not be that we let go of something that was a sin. But anything that God wants us to do is going to provide more blessing, not only to us, but to others around us. Than keeping a hold of those things that. We have to let go when we hear God's word in our. Voice, spirit telling us to do something. How much more important it is to take that, pick that up. And then on page eighteen, and this is the very last thing, I promise, question number five. Because of a conversation that I had with my sister. Earlier today, if you have a trusted friend, you can confess sins to that person and involve them in the process. Think about all those one anothers that we find in the New Testament, one of those things that we find in the New Testament is. In James, confess your sins one to another. And clearly we're called to because that's how we find strength, that's how we find strength to stand. Against those sins in the future is to have somebody that you trust. Somebody that cares about you, that you share your shortcomings and failings with. Who's good at doing that? Maybe we're good at listening to other people tell us how they've fallen, how they fail.
Well, it strengthens your community.
There, absolutely. It strengthens, what do we call the community we're a part of, the body of Christ?
Who saw, who come?
Anybody have anything else to add, any question that you wanted to ask from our first session? Now next week.
I'm gonna tell, tell him so.
Yep.
Okay, that's who is.
Over there? Next week. We'll all have our books.
That's right.
And with our books, we won't have excuses, so next week we'll be doing chapter twos. Week two in this, and it's on fasting and, and so.
No cake and ice cream next week.
Well, unless we're fasting from all those horrible things like, uh, Brussels sprouts and broccoli and instead. Wouldn't that be an easy fast?
Thank you for the cake and ice cream.
Thank you.
Well, this study is from somebody called Rose Visual Bible Studies. And so take the time to at least look at the pictures, cause some of the pictures are just beautiful, some of them are in. Israel and the drawings and stuff, there, there's a lot of. Lot of good pictures and, and drawings in here, so I know that, what?
Titus O'Brien. Teaching pastor at Grace Fellowship Church.
Does it say where that is?
Carol Springs, Illinois.
Oh, well, that's where all the credit cards come from, so.
Grace Fellowship Church, there's probably.
There's probably more than one of those.
It does narrow it down though, probably only three hundred Grace Fellowship churches. All right, well, let's close in prayer and then we can end our session today. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for your study and especially we thank you for your word. Your word, the logos, the living word of God that came into the world to take away our sins, Lord, we're grateful. That we can rely on your grace and we don't have to rely on doing. But believing. And listening and following. Lord, of course you recognize in each of our hearts that we aren't always good at following, we aren't always good at believing. But you provided the helper. Would help us to stay focused on you and turn from the lesser good to the greater good. The good that serves your kingdom, so Lord, I would pray that, just like Elisha. Ask Elijah, that you would give us a double dose of your blessing, a double dose of your spirit. And that we would be able to face everything in our life in the truth and the promise that is in you. The truth and the promise that we have through the sacrifice of your son on the cross. Lord, be with us as we go forth this day, we pray this in Jesus's name, amen.